So anyway, does that sound all right to you?
Good morning.
I'm wary of technology.
That is so wise.
We have one more. High school.
Thank you. How was that?
I've read the surface.
It was. We're always open.
I don't understand how the next floor. Zero. They keep not. But yeah. Really, I said.
Ah, that's fun. I know. Okay. Um, buildings that have to be.
We are. But anyways.
Hey, Bob.
Fortunately, we found.
How are you this morning?
A little sleepy.
I know, y'all.
I hope he wasn't up this morning.
Well, there's one good thing about Jan. She came down here, got the coffee made, got everything set up. Made it easier, but we don't have anybody doing that now.
Well, you used to have coffee here this morning.
Well, Jan did that. Jan's gone, so.
She's still like you.
Yeah. As far as I know, I don't know.
Did Murphy officially turn in his resignation?
I don't know. I think he said he was. I seen he did, but I don't know that for sure.
Wouldn't you be the one who turned it in?
Well, I think we should have been.
Rusty, do you know?
He has not submitted anything. Morning. Absolutely.
Okay. Ready?
You guys are up in line.
All right. Call this workshop to order. Thank y'all for coming. Um, the video will be our roll call. Jerry, would you make us a pleasure?
Let's really introduce the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um. Any additions, additions, corrections to the agenda? Then we approve the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
You know, just. You might look.
I only can have one from his house.
I'll share it out just as in the radio.
Um, we will. Make note that this is a workshop and not a regular DEA meeting, which will be September 7th. So we're going to work this through as a workshop.
So therefore, we would need to change the actual topic at the top from special meeting to workshop. On the agenda.
Okay. All those in favor?
Right.
Hi.
Close. Okay. The workshop, the reason we're having this workshop is it was said because we have new members. That we should revisit our bylaws and our TIP project, how they work. At the last meeting, I asked that everyone read the bylaws. I personally think that they're fine moving forward. Uh, we took it forward. Yes, go down. The lines and ask if you have any concerns. Think there should be any changes? John, do you want to start that out? Do you think they're all right?
I think it's okay. Somebody else has something. I'm open to suggestions. I don't see any wrong.
Al?
I guess I've lived with them for twenty-one years. And maybe it's just because I've become callous to them. And I don't mean that in a negative way. It's just that I've worked with them for so long that I've not found any particular things that caused me any heartburn along the way. So I'm content with them where they are.
Jared?
I'm good.
Okay. I think they served. Oh, are you?
Why were they changed in two thousand nineteen? What was changed?
Hmm, good question. Do you remember, Al? I think it was a minor change that we changed it in two thousand nineteen. Minor wording thing, or I don't remember.
If you.
I know it wasn't major.
If you look at the, the documents, the previous, and then what was approved in the resolution approving the new bylaw. They made it from a nine-member board to a range of five to eleven. That was the change. That is the change.
Okay, so.
That's the only thing I know.
That's well.
Okay.
And that's the only one that I've got, too.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that occurred by ordinance number one, 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 three, series oh-nine.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that case for you, pardon me, tell me if you have any, they look this one as well?
Hmm.
Okay. All right, he's not. Now, again, do all of you understand how the TIP? Works. I think you do. John, and I think you do now, too.
Yeah, I'm catching up on it. Yeah.
So we, we address that. Okay. Then I guess what I'd like to talk about today is, do you all understand what the board voted on as our three-legged project? To move forward on Woodland Station? Can you recall what we presented at the city council meeting? And I'd like to talk about those today. Al was handling the. Listing the property for sale. The pros and cons, the developing of the property. We had decided as a board that we were not developers and did not want to venture into that. That. Realm. So, Al, tell us, this new board, what you found and what your assessment was on?
Sure. Let me kind of put. A whole bunch of stuff that I've accumulated over the years together instead of aside that's not applicable at this moment. One of the prongs that I worked with for quite some time now, and this has been my thought processes for a large number of months. I was directed by the board at one point to see if we could still find a master developer. And I have talked with. Local real estate agents that predominantly work within the confines of Teller County, the things that are necessary to be sold and bought in Teller County. Also worked with one firm in Colorado Springs and talked with representatives from one commercial developer out of Denver. Without exception. Those professionals thought that this particular piece of property, though it is unique, it is in the center of town. But it is too small for them to address a lot of the development issues. And then tried to spread all of those costs over such a small parcel of land. Therefore, it was uneconomical to do. Therefore, I then pushed a little bit harder on. The DDA board sort of act as a developer, but only in a supervisory role. That role would be to select a individual who is uniquely talented. That could actually move this project forward to the point where we would have parcels. To some degree defined that an individual entrepreneur of whatever size they happen to be. Would be able to buy a parcel of land and then use that for their entrepreneurial pursuit. Without them having to go through all of the various issues that are necessary in the development. That would have been done. Uh, my proposal was that. This individual, and I'm going to use the word, it may be inappropriate, but I'm going to call him a planner. They're not really the developer, but they're the planner that goes through, works with the various regulatory boards. To figure out where the bumps in the road are, smooth them out and move forward. So that person would work with the Woodland Park Planning Department. Work with and develop architectural and design recommendations. Because we do have an overlay district in that area that may or may not be a valuable thing that we want in this market. And that's the big key when I say market, because we have not really been market-driven. We've been fantasy-driven for twenty-one years. So we need to get to market-driven. This planner would need to work with fire department, utility departments, electrical telecommunications. Do a variety of engineering studies such as drainage study, streets, parking. Surveying. Traffic studies. And a great deal of financial work to figure out who is going to be paying for what. Uh, my proposal was that we only define the perimeters on those parcels of ground. And I look at it as three separate parcels of ground in Woodland Station. Uh, if somebody told me that, well, I could see four in there. Yeah, I could accept that, too, because each of those parcels. That have different uses and different values. Some are very high, some are perhaps very marginal. Uh, and then just stake out and define those property corners. Once we know the shot size and shape of those parcels. Then when an entrepreneur comes in and says, I need a given number of square feet for my project. Here's where I would like it. Then that entrepreneur could put in the interior law line. And he would then basically be ready to go, because a lot of these questions would already be defined. And he would not have to try to define all of them for the entire structure if they only wanted a small parcel of land. So we would be a subdivider to a degree, but only on the perimeter of those three or four parcels of land. Then we could negotiate and potentially work with adjacent property owners to see how that given parcel of land. Would fit into their thoughts on how they would like to develop their land. Rather than, you know, we've been dancing this now for a long, long time. Uh, entering into our third year of fantasy is not a market-driven philosophy.
Okay.
Is that kind of in a thumbnail give you an idea? As to where we're at or where I'm at on that?
Jerry, you had.
First off, I totally disagree with this partial thing. Totally disagree that one person would be representing. Totally disagree. I totally disagree that, um, we would do anything that would benefit a. Neighboring property owner that happens to be sitting on the DDA board. That is a total sham. It's a conflict of interest. And if you think that I'm going to go along with that, you're. The whole thing is. It should, we're not developers. We should be developing the, the whole unit, whatever comes along. But if anybody is sitting on this board thinks that they, they're going to profit off of it, uh, because they're on this board, they should resign right now. That's my two cents.
Okay. Any more comments?
Yeah, I'd like you to explain that a little more. You've had this conflict of interest thing for a few meetings. So, so let's give you an opportunity to explain why this is a conflict of interest for me to be on this board.
Well, you plan to profit.
I plan to profit.
Yes.
You can prove that.
Arden, I'm not getting into.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we're moving forward. That's. Tony?
Okay, so, um, we are in a discussion work session, so hopefully the goal is to get out ideas. So, um, what I would say is, I think. I definitely understand where Mr. Bourne is coming from with respect to, and he used the term market. What I would say is that, now, I don't, and I agree with Jerry on one respect, with respect to it, it can't be one person. And what I mean by that is. Um, uh, we as a board, and now that we're on the board, we're actually responsible for all the previous board's actions as well. So, uh, keeping that in context. So, uh, I do believe in the free market. And I believe that even thinking about finding one planner person, even thinking about that. There's three parcels, and I don't necessarily disagree with Mr. Bourne if I think of it from a developer's perspective with my limited developer experience. Uh, but what I would say is, uh, the best thing this board could do, and. Um, I think it has been delusional for, since two thousand one. Uh, and then since we've owned the property, I think in two thousand nine, that we were smart enough. Up here to determine what the market will bear. What I would argue is that we put our efforts into just one thing. And that is, uh, that notebook, all the information that we have in the sixty-four hundred files that we have on record. Uh, all the information that we have from the city, Mr. Allspock. Um, we put together a document, a very detailed document of the good, the bad, the ugly of the property. Uh, we publish that to the ecosystem, the world, and wait for the market, whether it's one year or twenty years. I don't care. The reality of it is, only the market can solve this, and only the market. And a developer with a checkbook knows when that inflection point is. For us to even try to guess at it is delusional. For us to even guess at how they would want to break up the parcels is not, I mean, uh, very easy to do. So I think that's all we can do, frankly. I think it makes our job easier. We wait for the market. And what I will say is, Mary Jo, you and I were at a luncheon with the city. And a very successful developer in the Springs, if you recall. And that developer basically said, you couldn't give me the property. And I will say that I brought up two additional super-successful developers from the Springs. Uh, one that may be doing most of the downtown redevelopment off Teyon. And both of them, because I knew them personally, one from the servant on the Boy Scout board in the Springs. Um, uh, two from doing business with, and both of them said the same thing. We couldn't give them the property. And so what I will suggest is, let's put all of our efforts into assembling this electronic document. With everything we know to the best of our ability and publish it and wait. Uh, period. And yes, it means that at some point, when the DDA goes away and the property hasn't been sold, or we hit the. I guess the magical two thousand twenty-three date, the property goes back to the city, but they would be in the same country that. I'm sorry, the councils, the council's not that smart either. None of us are that smart to figure it out. And so we have to wait for the free market to solve it, whoever it may be. And frankly, I haven't run across anyone with a checkbook or the vision to actually make it work. Uh, I met with Mr. Williams, one of the parties we've been talking to for a couple of years before he even came to the DDA with his ideas. Uh, met with the Tava Development Group a year before they approached the DDA. So, and typically, um. You know, you have to have someone that has the checkbook to make it work. Uh, and, um. If something is ever done on that property that's positive. Will it increase the value of adjacent properties and the properties across the street? Absolutely. That is free market. That is reality. So, um. You know, there is no conflict of interest there. Um, conflict of interest, if we, uh, it's been talked about quite a bit at city council. Um, if we ever get to that juncture, I expect anyone on this board to step up and recuse themselves in a conflict of interest perspective. But with regards to the property, let's put together that document. Uh, last meeting Tanner came up and said he knows more than anyone about the property, maybe. Um, let's get everyone from Mr. Coy to everyone up here to the city involved in assembling it and then wait, period.
Okay, well, that, along those lines, assembling this document. Al, you mentioned the realtors you talked to. The issues were so great that they couldn't spread them across a small property. So obviously, those issues were communicated to the realtor in some way, shape, or form. Uh, so could you just give me, uh, like a nutshell, what you would have told the, the realtor? Like, here's the issues we're dealing with here that.
Probably, uh, we might start with, there's a great deal of engineering that needs to be done on that particular piece of property. Uh, defining what the flood plain is and developing a flood plain map and coming up with the appropriate ways of handling the. The water that drains not only off that property, but also that normally drains through there. We have to work with a core of army engineers, you know, uh, relative to the drainage that goes through there at this particular point in time. We need to worry about survey. To define exactly where our property lies. Uh, I remember many years ago, there was a survey of that property that was done. And there is encroachment on the south end. I don't know how extensive that encroachment is, but that will need to be addressed. Uh, to define where that encroachment is and how we might be able to solve that. Uh. We'll need to work with and define what type of, uh, improvements are going to be necessary relative to the fire department. Uh, what are we going to need for water, sewer, gas, telecommunications, all of that infrastructure there? We need to be aware of and reflect back on the benzene plume that does come through that property. Whether it has expanded over the years or if it is mitigating. Now, we do not have any requirement from the state that requires us to do anything, but it needs to be addressed if you're going to start building in that area. There was a time, and I don't know if it is still current or not, but, uh. They were not able to put living accommodations on the first floor of any building. You could put them on the second floor, and that was okay. And you still needed to, uh, install at the time of construction and foundation a vapor barrier underneath. Uh, again, I don't know where that lies in that particular process. It needs to be defined. C dot and traffic studies, again, needs to be updated. We've got a lot of stuff from C dot in the past. How current is that and what is going to be the impact on that particular piece of property at this time? Also, traffic flow within the parcel itself needs to be reviewed. And, and try to figure out what is going to be the best, not only for that particular piece of property. But so as not to impact adjacent piece of property, so that we have a good traffic flow. At this point, I think that's about, or basically a, uh, an overview of us and what needs to be done. There's a fairly large amount of stuff that needs to be addressed. It's going to take time.
Arden, does that answer your question?
Well, a little bit. A, a lot of the things you mentioned would happen on any property, anywhere. You have to deal with drainage, survey, traffic, uh, the one benzene, that's special to the property, but didn't slow the hardware store up, the vapor barrier. I'm not sure where that first-floor residential, if that was a choice, or. Somebody mandated that. So did that come from the state?
That's what my recollection.
Well, we'd have to find that and.
Yeah, that needs to be.
demonstrate that.
Yeah.
Because my other understanding is some of the past plans. Included underground. Fountain Creek, you know, a very expensive infrastructure project that was a choice. You don't have to underground the creek, but. So that's been, you know, just takes on an urban myth thing that you have to do three million dollars of. Earthmoving there just to do anything. Well, that's not really true. We've also had, uh. Developers. Come to us and be told they'd have to build a traffic light, uh, at the corner of Center Street. And that's not necessarily true until you do the, the C dot thing. So just figuring out exactly what. The starting point is for the next person to walk through the door that they don't get immediately discouraged.
Rusty had his hand up next to me.
Yeah, uh, what I, I want to go back to is, Jerry, your. Explanation of a conflict of interest that you'd be uncomfortable with regarding an adjacent property owner. We just, in the, the subject prior to moving to the property, talked about the bylaws. And we all said, we read the bylaws. We all agree, no changes. So I would refer to the definition of conflict of interest, Article, uh, four. That tells us what the, the conflict of interest it would force somebody to recuse. And there's a very important sentence here, and I'll read it to you. Um, this is talking about when somebody on the board, you know, would pertain to an employee if there was somebody hired. It does say employees or board members. There, there would always have to be a recusal on a vote. When a member would receive a benefit or incur a cost substantially greater than other property owners in the Woodland Park DDA. So it doesn't say, it's not limited to, it has to be an adjacent. Because by definition, with the C dot boundary, even across the street is considered adjacent. There is no separation recognized by a street. So it, it, it's going to be situational. Mary Jo, you're technically adjacent. Um, John, yours is adjacent. Um, let's see. Well, Murph's is, is adjacent. You, you can't just say adjacent. It, it rules somebody out from, um, being able to vote. If there's a conflict of interest, which means they're going to get substantially greater benefit. Now, most people would deduce, well, it's actually substantially greater or substantially, um, a loss. So anybody that. Anywhere in the DDA that would incur substantially greater or substantially less from an action is what would. Force a, a recusal for conflict of interest, not just the mere fact that they're adjacent to it.
So Rusty, you're, you're saying that it's okay for, to be on this board so that you can profit? You have somebody that's taken us to, uh, file a lawsuit against us. You got somebody that has demonstrated for years that they want that and have retaliated and constantly. Are you saying personally, you think it's okay for somebody to be on the DDA board to profit?
Jerry, I'm saying by definition, every business person on the DDA has a legal obligation. To enhance the, the values of the properties in the DDA. It's businesses taking care of businesses. So I'm telling you on the record, if somebody brings something forward that anyone on the board. Or any other business in the DDA profits, you're accomplishing the mission. Or any other business in the DDA profits, you're accomplishing the mission of the DDA. So yes, there should be a, an incentive to help everybody profit. But it can't be an, an individual substantially greater, and that's the key. Substantially greater than anybody else in the DDA. If one person is way out of line, that's wrong. But if everybody goes up, that's your mission.
No.
That's by the, the words in the, the article.
As it comes along, I appreciate your comments, Jared, and it will be considered as it progresses. Should that happen. Okay.
Yeah, I want to get back to Woodland Station and kind of button that up from my perspective. Um, Mr. Bor.
One part of it. So go ahead. Well, there's, there's three parts to what we're going to talk about.
Well, I'm making the argument that all three of those should be abandoned and we should have one stance. So, Mr. Boran's exactly right. Uh, he gave off a pretty comprehensive list of. Kind of the entitlement processes that developers go through, and he's been there, he's developed. And, uh, whether we have a developer coming in with a checkbook or whether they're getting loaned, those are all. The issues and entitlements that they would have to walk through the process. So of the entire list, the only thing that I would advocate for the DDA board spending money on. And I think it's appropriate is establishing the clear boundary in legal description of the property itself. Cause you can't sell it unless you have it defined. Uh, you can't, you know, even if a developer came tomorrow. Tomorrow, the first step would be the survey to define it, get the proper legal description so the title can be conveyed. So that's the only thing that I think we should put our effort into with respect to expenditures. Because frankly, the developers should bear the cost of the rest of that.
Right.
Okay, Al.
Yeah, um, I might reflect a little bit more in detail on Mr. Rutherford's comment on the, uh. The drainage ditch that's there is that, yes, uh, underground. Culvert has been certainly talked about to put in a box cover that, but. As I recall, the temperature of the Corps of Army Engineers was not to do much of anything. When, uh, the city was looking at that as a possible location for the swimming pool. Cause it was actually brought forward at that time that they put a box covert and put it underground. But, uh, that time they were not interested in doing anything. So. That, and I don't know what the temperature is today. Maybe it's changed. I don't know. Just some questions that you have to work through.
That needs to be addressed because I do know that it's a different staff at C dot today.
No, not C. Yeah, so. So it depends upon their temperature.
Waters of Fountain Creek in that statement in itself.
It's a watershed. It's not the headwaters. There's no water there. It's not feeding. It's just. It's a watershed. It's not headwaters. It flows into Fountain Creek from the, when it rains, when it storms. But it's not a headwater. If it was a headwater, there'd be water there now.
Well, that's what we said too.
Yeah, and that's why, that's why I call it a drain ditch. But, uh, that's not there. Well, that wasn't their temperature earlier. What it is today, I don't know. But earlier, and I agree with you.
Okay, moving on. The second part, is there any more questions on that? We'll move on to the second part. That was Mike Williams. He was the only active developer we had to have at the time. And I'm not sure whether he is still in that capacity at this time. So that part of the leg is. Up in the air. So we can move on from that. I have no idea. He said that. He has investors. He said that he was putting together something, would like to present it to the, to the DDA board. But he is not there yet, and I don't believe Sally has brought anything forward to people. So, we're moving on from that. Then the third part that we had voted on and to move forward with, so we need to address this. Was this plan of two thousand and sixteen. I only have three copies of this. There's copies floating around. Do you guys have a copy of this? And do you guys have one? John, do you have one?
I have one not with me, but I have one.
So, this is just a plan laid out, um, at the time. And I do know that everyone that was present at that meeting, including city, community. Or everyone in the room voted that this was definitely a desirable plan and to move forwards with it. They would like to see us move forward with it. Well, that has hit roadblocks all along the way. We had it. So this was done in conjunction, um. With the lay of the land, what was there with the least amount of money spent, it would be a community. Project. And it has all kinds of ideas. What would fit there, what we could do. This big round circle was a circus tent. Were surfaces. All of these other were parking spots. How the parking would work, how the traffic would flow, how the pedestrians would flow, walkways, that kind of thing. So, this is something that was voted on and we need to probably think about. Choose what to move on.
So, no, I think, um, as a matter of fact, I think I was in Mr. Coy's, uh, place of business. When he showed me the original renderings on his, uh, really cool computer software. Um, so I guess here's the question for the DDA board. So I think we have approximately twenty eight parks. And with them part proper that are designated as parks. Um, a- again, on Woodland Station, if, if our desire is to wait for the marketplace. And hold for the developer, whether it's one year or twenty years, uh, then other than doing what, um. Mr. Gamilke and Mr. Zulaga did a few weeks ago and, and keep it knocked down and looking presentable. I don't know that we should put much money into creating yet another park unless that's what it's truly going to be. Now, we've already, as a community, spent more money on Woodland Station than its current book value. When we consider, uh, the breach of contract lawsuit that we lost, when we consider, uh, the engineering monies put into matrix and other entities. Uh, I think the book value right now is one point two million. We've already exceeded that just in monies that have. Uh, given us no return. So, uh, I'm not averse to turning it into yet another park. And doing it properly. I would argue that Memorial Park is pretty dang awesome. Um, and can accommodate most things we need in our community. I'm not averse to it being temporary parking for different events. Um, again, as we learned, uh, the board should have learned previous, uh, as a board, we actually do have some protections. Uh, through the city because of the nature of being associated with the city. So I'm less concerned about risk factors there, but. Um, again, i- if we're going to wait for the free market to solve it, let's wait for the, let's define the boundaries so we can actually sell it when someone comes. Um, cause that's an expense that has to happen anyway. Um, if we want to. Uh, explore it being a park, then let's see that. I don't think it could be both. Cause I think otherwise it's a waste of funds.
As is, it looks very low rent, podunky, like we're trying to have a park, but it's not really a park. I would agree with Tony that if we decided. Memorial Park has been wonderful. So the money spent there has not been wasted. So if another park, it ought to be done correctly. Figure out how to fund it and just do it. So I understand that there's two competing notions here to develop it or turn it into a park. I could go either way. I'm just tired of the subterfuge of pretending to make a park while we're pretending to. Look for developers.
Well, so far we haven't made anything. We're lucky to get the grass cut and get the funds approved for that. People fuss at us every time we want to spend money on it, so. Right there. Jerry?
Well, um, I agree with Tony on the free market, uh, dictating what's happening. And I actually believe that that's what you're doing is, um, what you're suggesting is what we've been. Trying to do for quite some time. And that is take a, a situation. Let the, the free market determine what happens over there and take and make it useful for a public good. In the meantime, now, I don't think anybody's, uh, ever suggested spending big bucks to do that. Uh, it's just to, to keep it in a, uh, a public use.
Till it's developed, till somebody wants to put them.
And so, um, yeah, we, we just need to. Just let the free market deter- decide. And I think that that's what we've been doing all along. Don't think it's a new revelation.
No, and I would say that this could fit into the free market. I mean, right now, we had a hot air balloon over there. During, uh, what was it, July? Because there was no place else to put it. They couldn't do it anywhere else. And it was great. People commented on it and enjoyed it. I mean, I think it's until someone comes along that really can. And the properties around it, when they get developed, that should increase the possibility of redevelopment. But until then, the community could use this and bring events to town, concerts, like the bike rallies coming. It could be used if there wasn't so much controversy there. And if it was at least leveled, at least somewhat accessible. It could be used while we're waiting. And that's really what this program was designed for.
Yeah, I, you know me, I do a lot of research. When I got the plan, uh, the Woodland Station Land and Use and Management Plan. Um, the thing that struck me was the premise statement. So, which, which says no commercial or new commercial real estate development is not currently viable in downtown Woodland Park. That's the premise. I'm not sure I agree with that premise. So I tried to find who put this study and plan together. There is no certification. There's no credentials. There's no names on who put this plan together. So I have no idea what the, the qualifications are. Of rendering the premise and the plan. Do, does anybody have a, uh, documentation as to. Who created this plan? It's not signed. So we're working on a plan that we don't even know where, where or who.
I don't remember for sure. We've had a number.
Matrix is, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it can't be matrix.
Well, I would have think they would have put their name on it if it was, but it would go that back that far. But what's happened in the past obviously did not work. It's mull and void. Here we are today. How do we move forward? Again, it's a needle. What do we want to do? Can we, can we do something with the property so the community can use it? Until redevelopment comes, until other properties are developed, John?
Have we ever talked about, uh, I know they have groups that get together and they make trails and open spaces. That we talked about maybe just putting some trails in there where people can hike and walk and walk. I, I don't know, just something that put people there possibly. Not to this, this is got parking lots, this is got all, I'm talking about just paths, some trails. Just that people can walk, you know, they can get out of their car, they can walk half mile, they can walk two thirds of a mile, whatever. Just to, cause when we were over there mowing, I did see people getting out of their cars and using the rest. And I did see them walking around a little bit. I didn't see them going across the street and spending any money. I saw them getting back in their cars and leaving. But it might be a way to draw people over there where they say. At least then when people go by, they see people walking and hiking. Uh, it's just an idea. And I know that they have volunteers that do that. I don't know if they'd be interested in something like that or not. Cause then I know that we probably, if we get people around this drainage area, we don't do something to protect them from going over the edge. You can't have vehicles down there unless you put some type of barrier. Cause I could just imagine cars being at the bottom of that. Going over, you know, whether they're drinking or, or whatever. I, but if walking, I think you could probably put up some proper barriers. In the right spots that would guide people away from that. It was just a suggestion.
And that's kind of what we were trying to do when we went out and I'd like to have an update on our, our wood chips, that kind of thing. Uh, we talked about leveling it out, putting wood chips if you think can walk, can park. And then using some of the wood chips to make trails with on there.
I can tell you that I don't want to walk on wood chips, rather walk on the dirt.
I'd schedule that for general discussion. You want it?
Uh, yeah, let's do it now.
Do it now, okay. In the earlier part of the summer. I guess the board really wanted to do something to improve the parking down on that particular piece of property. And particularly that area that is immediately south of the woodland hardware. So I worked with a local business. And that individual was willing to come into that area down on, that we talked about. Level it out and bring in, uh, wood chips to, uh, help define a parking area. I, I worked with him, we laid out the area and he was ready to go the next day after our, our final meeting. Then I got a call, uh, directing me to stop. Because, uh, it was approved at that time for the bike rally to use it as a parking. And the city was going to come in and do some grading and bring in some of the, uh, the grindings from asphalt. But yet I was directed to put the wood chips on the property and that's where it was dumped and currently set. Uh, when I went by the property here this, yesterday evening, I see nothing has been done to prepare that for the, uh. The parking activity that's going to occur this weekend.
No, and I, I think that that was determined off limits just because it's so controversial. However, I did find out to follow through with that, that they do plan to park the vendors vehicles over there.
Okay.
And that would be it. And if other people park there, that's fine, but the vendors will use it for parking. That's all.
Earlier this year, we had a local businessman step up, willing to grade it. And put the chips down and distribute them at no cost. But we lost it at this point.
So I guess.
Indecision. And this is, and here's where my soapbox is. I've lived with that for a large number of years and it frustrates me.
Yes.
That we, we get a direction and then something happens and we go and blow it up. Get somewhere and then blow it up. And, and I'm getting on my soap, soapbox now at this point.
But it's true. And hopefully we can fix that.
Yeah, we can sell that property, but we can't do it in the current, uh, mode of operation.
Well, we've proven there with the last twenty years. So we gotta do something. Um, you can't just sit there or it's going to be an albatross to the city. And then we'll end up with storage units and going to housing. That's not what downtown, that last piece should be. Those little towns all over the country would die to have that size of property in the middle of their town to bring in tourists. And eat, um, economy and monies for activities. So we need to be careful in what we do with it. Um, any more comments on that? Do we want to? Al, would you be willing to contact him? Because it's not going anywhere with the city and as long as the bike rally. Would you be willing to contact him and see if he would be willing to step up like what he's done before?
We can see.
Shot ourselves in the foot.
What are we going to do with the, uh, desired wood chips that are elsewhere on the lot? That was, I was told that they would be moved at the time that. That was, I was told that they would be moved at the time that the parking was developed for the bike rally. So, we've got an extra issue now that we didn't have before.
Well, let me just kind of represent the city council. If the the bike rally in coordination for that is under the city manager's control, not the DDA's control. Correct me if I'm wrong, Sally, you're you're the city layers. Okay, so wouldn't we be talking to the city manager on what is necessary to do with the wood chips?
No.
Why would we not? Okay, but but Al's discussion is all around the wood chips in in time for the bike rally.
It's not going to happen.
It's not going to happen.
Not going to happen.
So.
Rally's out of it, so we're back to, what are we going to do? Are we going to pursue that to level that out? We had talked about the wood chips are not desirable, but they're free. And at some point, when we can do something better upgraded, that wood chip would be moved and it would be decomposed enough that it would look as tough.
Well, as a drainage concern, and and again, I would turn to the city staff for recommendation.
Area of the.
The wood chips.
That would be worked through Sally and through the city department.
Hear me out, hear me out. Wood chips float, and they float downhill.
Right.
We have major drainage for the city's infrastructure at the south end area. Those wood chips, if I'm, know my physics properly, those wood chips are going to end up clogging up the city's infrastructure.
No.
Have we run, had an opinion?
Talked about that, and we talked about it down there, that there are things you can fit to catch that, and it will be done through the city and with the the direction of that department road.
Okay, well, Mary Jo, this is a workshop, and I'm watching this, the planning director shaking her head no. So, maybe we could ask, since it's a workshop.
Jerry, do you want to use my microphone? The staff does have concerns about wood chips floating primarily into the Woodland Station detention pond. So, it would be an issue for the property owner, the DDA, to keep the detention pond from clogging up. So, you will, I would predict, wood chips float, they will easily move into the drainage and the detention pond. And then you're in a situation where you have to hire somebody to re- remove those wood chips.
And I guess being a fiscal conservative, that's my concern. What looks like it, Mary Jo, this is a workshop. We're we're talking. So, while it appears to be free, Al, I I would think long term, we would want to think about the cost that might be incurred later on. Thank you.
At the, oh, excuse me. At at the time that we're putting this project together, that particular risk was identified.
It was.
And I was making arrangements to bring in some sedimentation blankets, so as to help retain that. Yeah, because yes, we recognized that. And it was hoped that for the life of the retention of whatever that device that we were going to be putting into, whether it's the round, you know, ropes or some other type of retaining device versus the length of the wood chips in there and being actually driven over, walked on, rained on, snowed on, which tend to help stabilize them. So, it was a time interval that probably we would have been successful on. We do have a lot of dirt drainage into that detention pond. It's a point sometime in the not too distant future that that'll have to be dug out again. So, yes, drainage is an issue. And to a degree, it was being addressed, but that's a valid point.
Thank you. So, again, and sticking with my theme, I'm going to suggest, none of us have a crystal ball. And so, even to try to predict what events, what we might want to help facilitate on the property and what is the proper materials to put down for those events is almost impossible. So, I think in trying to do good stuff, and free isn't free usually, and trying to do good stuff, I think I think we put barriers in front of ourselves. For instance, if there's an event, and let's say it was the motorcycles, and they needed overflow parking, then it's overflow parking as is. And each individual adult, whether they're a motorcycle rider or automobile, has the right to decide to park there or not. But for us to decide what kind of material is appropriate for a motorcycle rider versus whoever, just doesn't fly. And so, I think somehow, I think we have to get rid of that mulch, in my opinion, before it does become more of an issue, period.
Okay, so is there a consensus then that we scrapped the wood chip project and now?
That was scrapped, yeah, for now.
Is that what we're determining here? Okay.
And Mary Jo, just tying in, because the city staff is preparing the budget. Has there been a line item request for funds in preparation for dredging the drainage pond? Has anybody spoken to the city staff about adding that line item for their budget for you?
We haven't, no.
Okay, I I might suggest that we reach out and let the the city manager know that there might be a requirement to dredge that drainage pond. I shall, thank you.
Mary, Mary Jo? Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that's a city responsibility to dredge that. It would be a DDA responsibility, and it should be in our line item.
Correct, it'll be in the DDA's line i- item, but the city council appropriates funds for whatever projects you need. So, if you need money to dredge that pond, it needs to be identified in that.
In the, in the DDA.
In the DDA budget, correct.
Yes, yes, not the city's general fund.
Correct, correct.
Okay, then you can call him and tell him not to remove more wood chips.
No, I shut that down when I got that, that indication that the city was going to grade it and bring in the the grindings.
Okay.
But that didn't happen, yeah.
Okay, so we need to move on. I will do a consensus that this is, that this leg of the project is on hold, or do we want to reconsider some uses down the road?
So, I think in our discussions, we've we've kind of identified potentially two courses of action. And what I would propose is versus a consensus, we'll be back in a few weeks and give us time to contemplate it and come back and have some kind of motion as to which direction we want to move forward with.
And we'll have to do that in the next.
Yeah, so I don't think we needed consensus today, yeah.
Is that good with everyone? Then we'll, we'll discuss this, whether we go on or this at the next regular September seventeenth. We have, I've invited, and I, I'm sorry, who were you?
Rebecca Allen.
You're Rebecca, okay. Rebecca is here, I've invited all three of our applicants to come today to see what goes on, and if they want to participate. And we will do interviews on September seventeenth. And after this meeting's over, Rebecca, if you'd like to talk to any of the board or ask any questions, you're welcome to. You know, a commentator that would maybe help us at our September.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate that. Um, so, we have talked, we don't need to talk a lot about this, but we will address it our September meeting. But you've had the resumes of our three applicants. If you have any questions or any comments on that, we can, we can at least converse about it a little bit. If you wanted to say your questions for next meeting, that's okay to.
Well, after the last meeting, do we want to collate our questions and run them by the city HR? And then be consistent and professional in how we approach the interview process?
This should be the same questions, and if they all come, we would ask the of the applicants to wait in the other room and do one at a time. But I think the questions would be the same. So, if you have a question you want to ask.
I I don't think that's what he's asking. I think from somebody that's, if, if, correct me if I'm wrong, somebody that's as black and white as I am, I may ask an inappropriate question not knowing today's, because I'm just blah. And apparently, that's not very PC, and PC I'm not. So, I think that we, Tony's idea is protecting ourselves, so we're not asking inappropriate questions. We need to, it today, in today's world with HR, all that, there's, there's just a lot of stuff that we have to be responsible for.
Yeah, and and it's less about protection and more about best practice and professionalism and setting a new tone and how we move forward. So, I guess what I would suggest is that we, each of us can submit some questions. We get them put into a document that we have HR review by the city to have them sanctioned, and then we'll have the questions in front of us. And then, Mary Jo, you could direct whether any or all of us ask the questions, or you ask the questions, it doesn't matter. And then we do it in a consistent manner. That's, yeah, so you're exactly right, you read me right.
I think that's good. My only question is, I think that we should come up with our own questions. I agree with all that you said, except I'm not sure about running it past the city, do we need to do that?
Again, what John's referring to is to make sure that we're not asking inappropriate HR questions.
I got you.
I mean, there's a lot, the.
For that reason, I think that would be, I would, I think that would be a good thing. So, let me ask this, Tony, can we ask you, would you put together, if all of the board would call Tony with questions, would you put those questions together?
I would be happy to call you, and I can, John and I can report on the project you gave us last time. And then add some internal controls, processes, things I would like to discuss in this forum.
Okay.
So, whenever, whenever appropriate, so yes, I'd be happy to.
Okay.
Pull that document together.
If you want to work with John to do that, to put those questions together, all of us will contact you. You have your phone number, your email.
Well, that's, that's one of the things I'd like to discuss.
We shouldn't be communicating through private email.
No, we should do it through the DDA. We should have DDA, so that's what you want to talk about next. Okay, Rusty's got a question.
When I was looking at the job posting, it does not have a rate. I asked the HR Amy, and she said she was going to be trying to get a rate to add to the posting from the the DDA.
And that's what we need to talk about at the next meeting. And probably, and I don't know if we need to do that in executive session or not, I can't think so. It would be the same that we paid our last, Corey, our last admin. So, it would be the same. I have no problem talking about that open. It started out at fifteen, three months, it went to seventeen, three months, and went to twenty.
Well, the problem with that sequence, though, is the applications close at twenty, on the twentieth of August, and we're supposed to conduct the the interviews on the seventh. And I know that there are people asking, what's the rate, so that they may be applying?
Well, I I have a comment about the rate. Yeah, it, and, oh, maybe six, eight months ago, I was paying help twelve fifty an hour. Now, I'm paying twenty dollars an hour, just to find people. I think our rate needs to escalate up and join the real world. And we're asking somebody a lot to show up for just a few hours and ruin it, make it worth your while. And I think that increase, maybe twenty-five dollars an hour, would be more appropriate, that's my thought.
And start out at that, or, and then no rate, just start out flat twenty-five an hour, is that what you're suggesting, what it is?
Sure.
Now, the.
I don't have a good handle on what would be the appropriate pay in Woodland Park at this moment in time. It is such, the employment market is so volatile right now.
No.
So, I don't really know. We may have to just rely on maybe the human resource department of the city to counsel us and see what we're doing. Certainly, want to be consistent, want to be able to attract good talent. Hopefully, talent that has an expansive character to them also, yeah.
And the HR department does have tables, so they can, like, literally, it's the same one when we we post city staff rates. Now, this is listed as an independent contractor for the admin position type of job description. But we could reach out to the HR for a recommended based on current rate structure.
Sure, don't we need to do that right now, if you're saying?
Well, we're not deciding on anything, we're having discussions, so I can certainly follow through with HR.
With HR, yeah.
Find out, so we will have that information at our September meeting.
Well, but he's saying the posting ends this month, so it doesn't do us any good to have it September meeting. He's asking that we put something on now, I believe, right, like soon, the next few days.
Do we go with, with what?
What is that rate?
I told you, fifteen, three months.
No, that was what you said, that's not what HR's, it's, I'm sure.
I know, but that's what we did before, do we go with what we did before and then discuss this at our September meeting and decide to raise that?
What, what, what was it, Mary Jo?
It started out at fifteen and three months seventeen, and three months twenty.
And that is historically what you, the DDA has agreed to?
That's what we paid, Corey, that's what we've done in the past. So, without having a board meeting and being able to vote on it.
Yeah.
We can't just change it, I mean, we have to do it legally, so. Comments down here? Pardon, Tommy?
So, I I want to be clear, because I think, did you give us the project to collate the interview questions and get them run by HR?
Yes.
Do you want us to do an add-on on giving HR recommendations on potential pay rates for this position?
Yes, that would work. Think you're going to be talking to them anyway. That's good.
Good.
Okay. We're going to general discussion and the reports. We'll start with Arden, and then Tommy can be your book. Arden, do you have any general discussion?
I have none.
Okay, so I have a couple of areas to, so with 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 regards to the project that you gave John Gamilke and I with in getting the data kind of transitions, transition to the city. The city did receive three thumb drives. Drive one had thirteen point three gigabytes, a hundred and thirty-nine folders, sixty-four hundred and ten files, primarily of files, and we're working to get that indexed. Drive two was seven point two six gigabytes, a hundred and sixteen files mainly meeting recordings. Drive three was nine hundred and sixty-nine megabytes, nine files mainly recordings. And again, getting that indexed so that we have a a good listing of what we have there. We also did receive a core request in this last week, and basically, it was for three items. One was the pre-trial briefs from both the plaintiff and the defendant in the DDA trial, and then the DDA judgment itself. We did not find those files on these thumb drives, so we were going to reach out to Mr. Coy to see if he could help us get those gathered up to meet the core requests. So, our initial response on the core request was. Uh, to meet the core requests, so our initial response in the core request was, we cannot find them. Uh, we then got, had a follow-on, um, request that we reach out. Uh, to try to get those, so we'll get with Mr. Coy and see if we can't gather those, those are all public documents. Um, at, with a court, uh, hopefully we can locate them without going to the court. Um, the other thing I wanted to kind of bring up was kind of like a bullet point, a theme. Um. Uh, for any board that I joined and I've been on a few. Um, uh, a theme for me and in my world at the bank is internal controls and processes. And so it's what keeps us out of trouble, it keeps us from kind of overstepping our bounds as a board. And so I think some processes, just, uh, observing. Uh, that we can clean up a little bit is a more formalized expense reimbursement process. And I think we can probably get some help from the city and mimic, uh, maybe their processes. Uh, did have discussions with the city, uh, they have offered. Um, to, uh, provide us a city email for each of us for the DDA. For a total of four hundred dollars a year, which I think is a good value, I think it would allow us to, to, uh, turn off that easy. Uh, so that we're not digging Mr. Coy's credit card in. Uh, after last meeting, I was able to access the DDA email as of this last week, I can't anymore, I don't know why. Uh, I would argue that four hundred dollars a year for, uh, and it's in the office three sixty-five ecosystem. So there's a, a lot of protections there from an IT security perspective, I think it's a good value. And I think, uh, we should put it on our agenda for next meeting to approve that expense and transition. Uh, because as Mr. Gamilke said, I will not use my personal or bank email for business, period. Uh, it's not appropriate. Um, also, um. Um, I was pleased to see, we were pleased to see that, uh, looks like a lot of like pre-two thousand sixteen DDA documents. Uh, when the city digitized, uh, it's in two places, one, it's in a physical, uh, climate controlled environment. Which is, uh, pretty, the boxes are there somewhere, pretty expensive to access. Uh, but it looks like the files were digitized, so when we get this index, we may have them going back to two thousand one, that's great. Um, the city is transitioning their, uh, laser fish online. Document repository system to a new system. And I would argue that as a subset of the city, we should put all of our documents into that same system. And what's nice about it is that we can hang off access off of the DDA page under the city of Woodland Park. And so any future open records request, they can actually go find those documents themselves. Uh, except for ones that would be deemed restrictive because of, uh, the requirement to keep them private. Uh, so, um, also I would argue that we need to establish, uh, an attorney communication. Process procedures, uh, for instance, um, I believe that any questions to the attorneys. And I do this in my own business, um, is that we draft the questions first and get, embed them first. Uh, for a couple of reasons, one, to make sure that we ask the question appropriately, because that's the key. When you're dealing with the attorney, you have to ask the question appropriately. Otherwise, uh, you could fall into the trap of guiding them to the answer you want. And, and if you've dealt with attorneys at all, uh, you understand what I'm talking about. So drafting, you know, a process whereby we draft the questions and then just like with our health issues. Uh, if you have to go to the doctor to deal with a health issue, you should always take the second person. Because you never hear everything. And so, um, I would suggest that not only do we document the questions prior to asking. But we also have at all times two DDA board members asking the question and listening to the answers. Interacting, uh, again, two sets of ears or better than one. Um, and, uh, those are the kind of four main areas that stood out for me. In terms of us doing our business properly and professionally. And I think, uh, we should consider, um, formalizing all of those areas. And I think in discussing with John, he was willing to, uh, for us to work together as a project. To come back with some recommendations to the board on how to accomplish all of this.
We'll put that on the agenda as well.
Good.
Well, I, I didn't, I didn't have anything to start with, but based on what Tony has just brought up. Val Carr was really adamant about, I mean, his number one pet, um, project. When the city council started with the new council was to get better rules and procedures. Now, the, the rules and procedures document that the city council came up with is a good guide. Uh, but I don't think everything on it would be appropriate. Would it be okay to, uh, uh, make a copy of the current? I- i- it's an ordinance, uh, rules and procedures. And float it to all the members to take a look at which things we might want to incorporate. And which ones we think are not appropriate as a start point. Cause I hate starting with a blank sheet of paper and I hate reinventing the wheel. So use that as a start document and then think about adding some language around the second point about the attorney communication process. So we could come to a future meeting with some ideas of what we may want to plagiarize and what we may want to just say. You know, we want our own stuff is.
Sure, I have no objection to that, any of the rest of the board.
You know, everybody okay, and I'll do it in electronic form so that, uh, it's easy for you to take a look at and just pull it up and, you know, markup. Okay, that's all I have, Mary Jo.
Okay, and I, um, I have a couple of things. And I, I briefly addressed this. And I'm, thank you, Michael, for coming. Um, there was a grant received by the city for tourism and Michael is heading a committee. And if you would tell us about that, please, Michael.
Yeah.
Good morning, board, I'm Michael Lawson's manager. Um, yeah, as Mary Jo stated, um, the city has received a grant from the Colorado Tourism Office. Called the Restart Destinations Grant. And what that is, um, is, uh, we will have a professional facilitator who works in the tourism industry. Come here to Woodland Park and help us develop basically a tourism strategy document, a roadmap. Uh, for what the city would like itself, uh, to be in terms of tourism in the future. Um, and it, it has struck me since I arrived here late last year that, um, there's a lot of different opinions on what tourism. Looks like in this city and what it should look like in the future. And so since that time, we've been thinking about how to put a finer point, um, come up with a united front. On how we want to do tourism, and so this grant helps us do that with other people's money, which is great. Um, we have a number of different stakeholder groups in the community, including Main Street, um, Gail Gross and SOAR. Um, we have the US Forest Service who's going to be a part of it, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, the city, of course. Um, and we thought the DDA might, um, kind of round out that list, um, of groups to have is just that core, um, stakeholder group. As the process moves forward, we will bring in other folks from throughout the community, um, for a community-wide workshop, uh, in October. Um, but for right now, we're just trying to round out that core team to help us get to that community-wide workshop. Excuse me, so Mary Jo and Mr. Weatherford and I have also spoken, uh, a little bit. Um, but it seemed wise that it come back to the, the committee here, uh, to figure out if DDA is interested. And if so, who might be that representative? We asked that one person represent DDA if the board's interested.
Michael, I have a question. Are, are you, since there is some chapters about tourism in the, the comprehensive plan. Are you tying the comprehensive plan effort with this new grant money effort?
Yeah, so as part of, um, kind of the needs assessment for that grant, they have pulled in a number of different documents. Um, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what those all are, but we have submitted those, including, uh, the draft comp plan document for that facilitator.
And, and the planning commission is tied in with it, maybe a representative, just because they have to sign off on the comp plan. They may want to be a participant or at least listener, or at least offer it to them.
Um, I, I might think that we, uh, could bring in someone from, uh, the planning commission. For that larger, um, community workshop group, uh, excuse me. Um, but we've, we are trying to keep that core group very small at this point per the request of the grantor. Um, so unless someone from the planning commission is an expert and represents one of those groups, I would be a little hesitant to do that. Um, but we, uh, we will look for a way, I think, to make sure that, uh, whatever we come up with. That's well against the comp plan and is consistent with it.
And, and I'm more, you know, we've talked about the fragmentation, trying to bring it together. They may simply be there as a liaison or a, an ear to listen. I don't think they're going to have much to contribute other than to be a participant. Or at least offer them the opportunity to participate, so they can choose to participate or not.
That's a good point, but.
Well, yeah, well.
We need to talk about Arden, I suggested to sit on that board with my.
What timeline are we working under? Cause I thought this was until ten thirty.
Ten thirty?
No, no. So, Michael, the board, this is a consensus, we can't vote on this, if it needs a vote, we'll pass, take it to September. Consensus so they can get started, Arden, do you want to do it?
I'm willing to do it, but it shouldn't have been a phone call, me and you deciding I'm going to do it. I think we should be a item on my agenda for next.
First, I want to ask if you will.
Yeah, I told you I'd go my way here, but we shouldn't just decide it. This is how things have been done in the past, we should put it on the agenda.
So consensus so they can move on, we'll put it on the agenda, is that all right too? Would anybody else like to volunteer to do that?
S- and if I may, and I, I apologize for, for putting the, the board here in a, perhaps a difficult spot. But, um, there, there will be a series of meetings for this core group leading up to that October workshop. Um, and so that first one, I believe, will happen later this month, and I believe the board's next meeting is early September. Um, so I, I don't know, not, not pushing for an answer right now by any means. But, um, if someone wanted to come in and just be a part of that meeting informally. And then if you wanted to kind of switch horses in, in, in the middle, um, you could do that or, um, however you want to do it. But we will probably have that first meeting if y'all want to attend, somebody. Um, or you can just catch up after, um, when we meet again in September.
Uh, so we can't vote on anything, but I, I would suggest that if we have a consensus, then, uh, we can. Send a representative to at least start the meetings and then formally ratify or approve in September.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So, is that consensus that Arden can send that first piece and then vote in September? Did he be the representative? That's the consensus, so.
Yeah.
If anything else you'd like to say, anything that we could say about the bike rally to help with? I understand that, that the vendors will be parking on Woodland Station and that's about it, is that correct?
Um, I'm not sure, you probably have better details on where the vendors will be parking than I do. I don't think we have anything else, but, uh, whoever's listening, the bike rally, uh, will start Friday. Um, in the, in the afternoon and then carry through to Saturday evening. Um, but we appreciate DDA for being a willing partner, certainly to help make that happen, we're very excited.
Good, thank you, thank you for talking. Okay, Rusty, you're the, um. Jerry, go ahead, in general discussion, do you have anything?
Um, yes, uh, Colorado Revised Statute thirty-one dash twenty-five dash eight-one-nine. Conflict of interest, no board member nor any employee of the board shall vote. Or otherwise participate in any manner in which he has a specific financial interest. Defined as a matter in which the member or employee would receive a benefit. Or incur a cost substantially greater than the other property owners within the district. When such interest appears, it is the duty of the board member or employee to make such interest known. And, uh. Hence for, henceforth, retrain, refrain from voting on an otherwise participating. In a pa- particular transaction involving such interest. Willful violation of the provisions of this section constitutes malfeasance. On the part of a member of the board and his grounds for instant dismissal of any employee. The governing bodies made by ordinance provide for automatic forfeit, forfeiture. Of office by a board member, uh, for violation of this section. I am going to repeat it over and over again, there is a conflict of interest here. And I'm going to object, and I object to the city council putting us in this position.
And Jerry, you've read almost verbatim, what is our conflict of interest state, statement?
Okay, my take. Al, do you have anything?
Might, uh, share with the board. Uh, a few days back. The members of city council had a training session put on by the Colorado Municipal League. On, uh, boardsmanship, how to analyze information. Uh, board decorum. Uh, I found that to be a very enlightening and refreshing thing for me. Uh, even though I've been on boards for quite a few years, get to thinking, you know, I know it's, what it's all about. Well, they bring forward some new little nuances that are very, very important. CML also will do that for boards and commissions of the city. And we have that opportunity to participate in that. And I found it to be a, a very desirable thing. And would recommend that maybe we look at a board training to learn about board decorum, uh, boardsmanship. So that we can become a more effective board.
Sorry, the city didn't invite us all to that.
Yeah, they did, uh-huh, that's how I found out about it, it was mentioned here in one of our meetings, yeah, yeah. I picked up on it, I thought I'm going to attend and I found it, uh. Very, very desirable. You know, it's an hour program or thereabouts, and it was presented very, very well. And I would say it would perhaps help us.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I suspect, uh, Michael could help us, you know, put that together. Being that, uh, the city is a member of CML, that they would be willing to come down.
That's good, does that, do you think that can score on the next agenda? If it doesn't, it's on the next agenda, I would like you to bring that up.
Okay.
At a future meeting too.
Am I too far out in left field, Michael?
I, I don't think so.
Okay.
I, I remember Mr. Mr. Bommer is the executive director for CML and he, he made that offer. Uh, we, we can certainly reach out to him even today and see what, uh, what a timeline might look like. Sure, y'all can bring it back next meeting, but we'll, we'll start to get the wheels rolling if you like.
Okay. However, the board feels on, yeah, thank you.
Put it on the agenda next time you discuss that.
Yeah.
There too.
So, I mean, yeah, well, just, this is a work session, I would say, I think it's an excellent opportunity. So I think, uh, Michael's offered to find out a timeline. So I think we, we should put it on the agenda to formally approve it. But is there anyone against the concept of being trained a little better? Okay, thank you.
If you wouldn't, Michael, that would be great.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe approve the time and, and set that up.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we can do that.
Good, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have any discussion? In general, yeah. So, and I don't, I should know the address, but I don't, um, there's a. When I go through some of our responsibilities. To encourage where appropriate, the renovation and reuse of vacant and deteriorated structures within the district. We have a building right across the corner from Arden's building. That's been sitting there for years that I've seen. How do we help this person, how do we try to make that, it's, it's right on a major corner. It's right across from the dinosaur resource center, it's right across, Arden's got a nice place. Uh, he's got a nice, I mean, a lot of people have nice places right there, that's like the eyesore in the corner. What is our responsibility is the DDA, because it's. What is our responsibility is the DDA, because it says here, this is part of our responsibilities. How can we try to help that situation? And then on that, the other thing is is it's uh landscaping, um. I know some of us have put a lot into fixing up the outsides of our buildings and make making them friendly for people to walk by, even putting out picnic tables for people to use, and then there's others that aren't. If you drive through the alleys and the and the backways, you'll see weeds four or five foot tall, uh, discarded furniture, things like that, and there's a lot of people, there's more and more foot traffic in Woodland Park. And they are using these ways to get through, and so what is our responsibility, how do we address those things, we say that we're responsible to do them, but I don't see anybody doing any footwork or anybody shaking any hands or knocking any doors to make these things happen. So how do we make that happen? But we're so far, we sit here and we make some ideas and come up with some plans, but we're not doing, there's no footwork, there's no, there's no legwork involved, so what do we do as a board, direct me? I'm kind of a A-type personality, I want to go out and do and try to make things happen. Um, so what do we do with that? Suggestions or?
Is this the building that used to be a restaurant at some sort of a kitchen type thing?
Jerry's Jump.
It's owned by. It's gotta be, do you know who owns it, do you know anything about it?
Honestly, um, I think there's uh Sally, or Sally, are you familiar with the Jerry Jump, Jerry's Jump Building? Um, I think there was somebody trying to renovate it, and there were some stumbling blocks, what they are exactly, I don't know, but I I think Sally might have some.
So, is there something we can do though to make it? When we renovated our building, it didn't look like that during renovation. Is there something we can do to the exterior to make it a little bit during the process? I I and I'm not pointing anything, I'm just saying it is, it is kind of a big eyesore right there on the main corner.
I agree.
Yeah.
Any comments, Alan?
This is really a private property situation, and I'd rather not comment because the owner is in uh, legal issues with the contractor.
Okay, so it's none of our business. Yeah. So, as it, so okay, so really, we say we want to do these things, and it's in our, it's in our objectives and purposes, but we don't really want to do these things.
Well, we're limited somewhat, I mean, we can't dictate, that goes back.
I'm asking, but what to help is corrected, it says that where we can, where we can help, is there anything that we can do to help as a as a board here, cause that's part of what it says. We have some finances, we have some resources, can we help? Uh, uh, you know, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, so the city does have uh, keep Woodland Park beautiful, and I think they do a great job, and I know some current board members and previous board members participated in a very uh meaningful way in those processes, so I I would encourage you to explore, keep Woodland Park beautiful.
Okay.
Mary Jo, does the DDA actually submit their own budget to the city, or did the city?
We make our budget, then we submit it to the city for approval.
So, wouldn't it be taking John's uh question the the DDA board members would simply want to add some sort of a assistance line item for funding? Is that how that would work?
We have some of that budgeted, but we are having a hard time spending it, we seem to get some criticisms for it, so we're being very careful in how we spend it. So, okay. Bob, you got anything?
Uh, yeah, I have a few questions.
Yes. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, this is a question for all three new members, and uh, same question for each. Uh, what do you hope to achieve as a board member? Sorry.
I just want to get something done with Woodland Station.
Woodland Station. Okay.
Uh, I'll try to be succinct, um. So, um, I think why I'm here is to help um meet the mission of the DDA, which I think right now is not necessarily just Woodland Station, I think it's um managing the DDA properly, I think it's repaying the debt, I think it's setting up the conditions for Woodland Station to be solved. And when appropriate, uh, I believe we're gonna have a TIF application here in September to uh openly and meaningfully um take that application seriously and assess its benefit to the district and to the city of Woodland Park, so just overall uh hoping to help be an adult on the dais to improve the DDA function.
Well, as a small business owner, I want to help other small businesses, I also want to see us grow, but I want to see us grow in a healthy way. Um, I come in as somewhat of an outsider, so I'm a little bit clean from all the 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 gossip and and all the things that have gone in in the past, I'm trying to come in with a clean, open head. Um, I don't write anybody's shirt tails, um. I think on my own, I make decisions on my own, and I'm just trying to gather the information to find out what's best for the city of Woodland Park and what's best for the business, because we are responsible for the businesses within the DDA. Um, and I think that's our primary goal, is to make that as healthy as possible. Um, I think I think we've got a good chance of maybe doing some creative things, getting something more positive going. I'm not saying that some positive things haven't happened in the past, I'm still learning what those are. So I'm still learning how to best help.
Uh, I do have a follow-up question on the, since Tony and Arden mentioned Woodland Station, how would you go about solving the Woodland Park station problem?
I'll go first, um, I've made clear my perspective, we create a document electronic or otherwise, that has the good, the bad, the ugly, and we wait for the free market period. We don't try to pretend to develop um, other than possibly doing a boundary survey to define the actual property left in the legal description, so that if a buyer comes, we're prepared to actually enter into contract. That's it. I have no magic pill.
Yeah, very similar to that, it needs to be packaged as a real opportunity for somebody to do something here, not a mousetrap.
Not a mousetrap?
Not a mousetrap to get caught.
Okay, uh, I know the follow-up on that, who is that is gonna be footing the bill for all the infrastructure improvements that need to be done on Woodland Station before it's developed?
Well, again, we're gonna vote on it as a board, and I'm suggesting we don't spend anybody except for potentially a boundary survey. We shouldn't be doing any infrastructure, we shouldn't be guessing at what that infrastructure should be, or what that use might be, or what ought should be divided how. I think we wait, period. I mean, it's very simple.
Oh, is there uh any update on the Williams project, are they dropping out, or what's going on with those guys?
We don't know, there's still, there's you know, we don't know, and they, I don't guess no either. There's a new developer supposedly has joined, Michael, we've seen nothing, they haven't contacted the city, we haven't presented anything, so at this time, it's on hold.
They were scheduled to come to the last meeting, but they did not come.
They didn't show up?
No.
Hey, anything else?
Uh, can I make a personal move?
Sure.
As a citizen of Woodland Park, this uh Woodland Station thing's been going on for over twenty years now, it's white out on the DDA. Uh, the costs of the debt that you owe the city because of this project, the development problems with the infrastructure and and the benzines are a monkey on everybody's back. And Tony's absolutely right, nobody's gonna go in there with such a small parcel and try to recoup uh, a refund on their investment or return on their investment, when there's so many problems with that driver. So it would be my suggestion to just give it back to the city and let them worry about it. And then deal with the debt that you owe the city.
That man, now our debt will be paid off in twenty-six and twenty-eight, twenty-six, I believe, the city is twenty-eight is back truck. And our debt will be paid off in the end in thirty-two. So our debt is moving forward, and we have brought it down substantially, so we're paying our debt fine. And we just, we just need to decide Woodland Station, we've had great projects everywhere else all over town, but Woodland Station is our albatross, and we just we need to figure out what to do with it, and we can't just really dump it on the city, that's not that's not what this is all about, we're trying not to do that. Hannah, do you have anything?
I do have just a few things.
Uh-huh.
Regarding the debt to the city, just a reminder, that began as a one million dollar loan, two thousand and seven. In two thousand and seventeen, it was a million, one, four, seven.
Thank you, Sally, is that better? That uh, the, a previous board negotiated a payment plan to repay that debt, this is a debt everybody's talked about in this committee for a long time. It's a black eye on the DDA, and we took significant measures to ensure that this DDA couldn't repay it, and today, the principal outstanding is six hundred and sixty-five thousand. The first payment being in twenty-seventeen, so that's pretty significant, if you ask me, that's great success in reducing that debt. And if you just stay the course, at a minimum, it'll be paid off completely in five years. The uh, I think Mr. Melty, John, asked a great question about that building that sits at the other end of the block my building sits on, boy, would I love to see something happen there. Uh, the answer to your question, what can the DDA do? You have TIF financing, you can incentivize projects, it's really a financial, that's really what the DDA is, you can't tell them what what they need to do, you can you can make suggestions and and all of that, you can knock on the door and you can shake their hand, but really it boils down to the money. And you can offer them money. Hmm, now, we wade into a philosophical question of whether DDA should be used for such things or not. And what's your political philosophy? And I hear a council liaison on the board say, maybe you should have a line item in your budget for such things, well, that's very appropriate. Now I hear another board member say, you should look to keep Woodland Park beautiful for that, deflecting away from using the DDA, and I think that reflects different approaches to this organization and how it should be used, that's a philosophical and you guys need to wrap your heads around, you know, figure out how you want to use the organization, it's not just that property, there are several others in town that where there are some really key opportunities, if you want to engage, you know, the DDA could make some meaningful difference in what the projects get done. I'm curious, what TIF proposed or application is coming in September? I can't wait to see what that is. Are you approaching? Miss Kewett, thank you very much for being willing to serve as a volunteer and engage here and on this tourism board. Personally, I think it's very healthy, I'm excited to see it, I know you're a smart and capable man, and I think your contributions are very. The documents that were asked by, I heard my name brought up a couple times. I have been asked by Mr. Neil for those three documents you mentioned. My answers are in email and public record. I did submit them to the DDA. If anybody wants my help with those, you can see Mr. Neil or ask me, and I'll give you the same answer I gave him.
Uh, I'd like to respond to that, I'd like to enter, let me respond to that, please. Two of the three are there, two of the three are there, I've located them, the pre-trial brief and the the plaintiff's pre-trial brief and the defendant's pre-trial brief appear to be there, both of them. The judge's findings do not appear to be on the disc.
Okay, I submitted all of the records that I have regarding all of that. If you cannot find them, well, keep looking, you have access to them. They are open public records, they are out there, there are numerous avenues for you to get them. Going to court to get them is absurd. So, think on it, you can figure it out, and if you want my help, my offer to you stands. That's it for me, thank you.
Sally, do you have anything?
No, ma'am.
Lynn, do you have anything? Michael, and Rebecca just left, I'm sorry about that.
And she uh wanted to extend her apologies, she needed to get to an apology.
Okay, well, um, the only thing that we didn't probably get to talk about is ideas for the DDA district, others in Woodland Station. And we're just running out of time to address that issue, I'd like to put that on one of our other meetings in the future, we talked a little bit about it. Joe Building, but there's more to talk about. Another meeting, um. I guess all we know is a mention to the jury.
Can I extend just a few more minutes, cause um, I was just uh thinking about Mr. Volkey's questions to the three new board members. Um, is it appropriate to ask uh, the members who have been on for a while uh, their perception of why they're serving and what they would like to see moving forward? I would love to hear that, since we're in a work session.
I have my voice set, Alan, you want to start?
I get to be first out of the chute, yeah. I've often been asked, why do you still subject yourself to all of the things that go on on the DDA board? Yes, I was there in the beginning. There's a lot of protect, uh, prep projects that the DDA board has done very successfully and maintained, and it certainly has added substantially to the business community. Going forward, there's certainly a lot of other projects that can be done, yes. Uh, that particular property that we were talking about earlier, is there something that we can do? Yes, John, there are things that we can do uh, if we're willing to do stuff, and maybe reach forward and help that to occur. For me, the TIF is really public money to be utilized for the public good within the confines of the downtown district that has been defined as the DDA district. In the past, there's been times that we have used that maybe in not as desirable a manner in which we probably should. But my philosophy is the, as example, the hole that was associated with the country inn that was solved by that particular property owner, that's a good utilization of funds. I don't like to use TIF funds to improve only the bottom line of a business from a competitive standpoint. The improvement that went in and associated with Dan Taylor and the human being and the car wash, they solved a major issue, that corner was really a dead issue. He did a lot of good work, improved the visual aspects of that particular lot, that's a good utilization of funds. But to give TIF funds to a firm just to improve a bottom line, or they need the TIF funds in order to be successful in the community is not a good use. For years, I've been a resident of the city, well, first the town of Woodland Park, then the city of Woodland Park, and my goal has always And my goal has always been, you know, what can we do to improve our community? Uh, there's been a lot of good projects along the way. The DDA has some additional ways in which we can help to improve our community, and I want to do that. Even on Woodland Station, yes, it is a albatross, as some people like to call it. But I think there's some opportunities there too. But it's not just limited to the confines of that particular piece of property. You need to include what is going on adjacent to it. And how you can improve those properties simultaneously benefiting Woodland Station. And benefiting the city of Woodland Park. It's not an isolated item. I guess I find these arguments about conflicts of interest because their property is adjacent to it. Uh, is a pretty harrow argument. And it's certainly not going to serve the benefits of our community totally. And I'm interested in the totality of our community. And that community is, for the most part, because of my position on this board, is the DDA district. But collateral to that. It'll benefit people outside the district too and benefit our residents. So you can't look at this biopically. You've got to look at what is the big picture also and not lose that. Does that?
Yeah, they give what you like. The big picture.
Yeah, big picture. And we must not lose the fact that. Someday. There may be an alternate route in and around Woodland Park. I have, let's say, enjoyed or listened to arguments about a bypass. Starting, I think, the first year that I moved to Woodland Park. That was nineteen sixty-eight. They've been wanting, some people want it, some people don't, and it's been. Last fifty some odd years, an issue that has been discussed one way or another. Will it happen in the future? Most likely, there will be some kind of an alternate route. Unless we go back to horses. Then we won't have to worry about it. Thank you, John.
Um, Al, Al took up my time, so.
You wish.
Um, uh, the reason I, uh, signed on with the board was, uh, for civic duty. Basically, I, I love Woodland Park. I would like to see it. Be, uh. Even better. Um, and I, I came onto the board with no baggage, no, no special interests and I had, I had. As a business person, had a kind of a deep dislike for the, the board. Eventually, and I wanted to, I wanted to help right the ship in my estimation. You know, when I was a hockey coach, I'm sitting there screaming at the referees. Uh, one game, the one referee comes over and he says, well, if you think you can do it better, do it. So I did. I became a, uh, official. And that's kind of the, the approach I've taken to this. I want the citizens of Woodland Park to, uh, enrich them, uh, the best we can. So our decisions are, should be made for the entirety of the community, not just for individual few. I do not believe this should be a pulpit to, um, benefit personally. From, um. The. Let's see, the Woodland Station. Uh, I personally would like to see Woodland Station, uh, be more beneficial to the community. I would like to see. Personally, I'd like to see like a rec center or bowling alley or something, something that benefits the, the locals. Not just people, uh, from outside of town, uh, not just tourists. Um, I think that's much needed in this town, and I think this is a good, good opportunity, a good place for that. So while I'm not only supporting. That kind of stuff, whatever is right is right, I'll go for, but I. I think there's a, a need and it would be a nice thing to have is more community oriented, uh, services.
Okay. Oh, me, you know, this is my home. I grew up here. You know, I, I don't want to lose everything that was good here as it grows, but I'm not against growth and I. You can't stop growth, but you can definitely improve the quality of it. And I guess I'm here to, uh, represent the people. Citizens as well as the businesses of this town. I just, I think it's important to protect some of our history. Because that's who we are. So many people come to town. Well, what is Woodland Park? Well, we lost what Woodland Park was, and I, I would like to be here to create. Some semblance of what we had that really worked. And like I said, represent the citizens, people as well as citizens of Woodland Park. To make our town better. And I agree with what you said. I don't, you can reiterate that. Oh, that answer? Questions? And I would like to say one thing. We have had that Woodland Station has been, uh, addressed by so many issues. It was, it was purchased and given to the community of Woodland Park. And it was used for the people of Woodland Park. At one time, it was the heartbeat of Woodland Park. Everything happened there. It was the voting center. It was the classrooms of the fourth grade for a whole year. It's where they played football. It's where they. They bought the first uniform for the band. The band marched there. Uh, it served the community and I'm really saying for anything to be a success there, it's going to have to serve the community and not. An individual to be successful. I, I think that's the history of it. And that's just my personal feeling towards the problem. Okay. Does that answer your questions? Any comments? If not, do I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Al seconded it.
There you go.
All those in favor?
I want to put a little more flesh on what I think could happen in Woodland Station.